Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here at City Hall. It's May the 1st, 2018. We're here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Kim Irwin, the Executive Director of the Brazile Pregnancy Center, to give our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by Councilman Tony Mobley. All rise, please.
Would you all bow your heads and pray with me, please? Heavenly Lord God, King of the universe, I thank you, Father, for this day that you've given us, for this meeting that we have had to join together as one good union. Please let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts, Lord God, be pleasing to you. Let us uplift everyone, each and every one of us, to think kindly of each other, to bring each other together. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Now if you'll join me in the pledge. I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one indivisible.
At this time, we have a proclamation to be presented. It's the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and we've got some representatives in the House today. Forward. That's you, yeah, all you motorcycle riders. The proclamation reads as, "Whereas today society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce the motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of the motorcyclists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and it is the responsibility of the riders and the motorists alike to obey all the traffic laws and the safety rules. Now therefore, I nenuke, the Mayor of the City of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. And in Granbury, Texas, I urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in the operation of a motorcycle and give the operator the respect on the road that they deserve." It's where a citizen has the opportunity to speak, and tonight, we have no, nobody has signed up, so we're going to move on down to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda, we have on there, the consideration of approving the City Council meeting minutes of April 17th, 2018's regular meeting. Also, we have to consider approving the interlocal agreement between the North Central Texas Council of Government and the City of Granbury for implementation of air quality education and outreach. Number three is to consider approving an agreement with the Pontoon ME LLC to utilize the Tiki Hut in the Granbury City Beach Park to operate in the concession rental and stand-up paddle boats, kayaks, and pontoon boats. And number four is to consider approving a letter of intent to proceed with the Honeywell Incorporated towards finalizing a contract for lighting upgrades, HVAC upgrades, and control upgrades throughout the Granbury and its several city buildings. Number five is to consider adopting ordinance number 18-27, amending the City Code of Ordinance Chapter Article 6.02, collection and disposal of waste, illegal dumping. And number six is to consider adopting ordinance number 1828, amending the City Code of Ordinance Chart 8 by adding Article 8.12, Regulation of Sex Offender Residency. And number seven is to consider adopting ordinance number 1829, amending the City Code of Ordinance Chapter 12, Section 12.01002, the use of skateboards or bicycles by removing the reference of a code section and adding the reference to the specific map. Number seven, as you noted in your handouts there, it actually just describes the area where those are prohibited. So, Council, you had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda items. Is there any items on there you wish to remove or make changes to at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
Could we pull up item number four? I'd like to talk about that.
Item number four, we're going to have some more discussion on that one. We will remove that one from the consent agenda. Council, any more discussion or any changes or any one item that you'd like to remove? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item number four.
Submove.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch, and a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on the consent agendas? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved, less item number four. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda, and we will move item number four to the top of the deliberation agenda, that being to consider approving a letter of intent to proceed with Honeywell Incorporated towards finalizing a contract for lighting upgrades for the HVAC upgrades, control upgrades throughout the Granbury and the several city buildings. So I'm going to call, I guess we'll call on Chris Coffin to maybe give us a more depth definition of what this means to us.
Okay, this is a study that we've been working with Honeywell representatives. They've done a preliminary review of our, some of the key energy users of our electricity within the selected five buildings that they did a study on. And the back page of your agenda shows different types of savings related to O&amp;M, operation and maintenance, over a 10-year period, and you can see that chart right there. Return on investment does not include interest or escalation, and so the return on investment, if we were to spend the total amount that's proposed here, and believe me, we've got to do a little more in-depth study before we get to that point, would be a 6.8-year payout if we did all those upgrades. And so, as you know, our building, all of our buildings are aged, and the HVAC systems are not as energy-efficient as what's available today. We also budget a contingency fund every year in case the chiller goes out here at City Hall. It's been repaired quite a bit, and it's due for some major upgrades. So we thought we might do this in a more methodical method for overall building maintenance, and we reached out and met with Joe Davis, local citizen that does this, who's been in the business for 20 years. And Joe is here with his associate, and I'd be happy to get them to come address y'all as well to answer any questions. But basically, what we're talking about is looking at lighting upgrades, heating and air upgrades, control upgrades throughout the city and several buildings. For instance, at the conference center, we just replaced one of those units, and the rest of them are due to go out as well. So it might be wise to do all this at one time and look at it. Now then, what we're doing is, with this agreement that we're proposing to do tonight, is we're giving Honeywell the go-ahead to do this in-depth engineering study, and if we move forward with the project and allow them to do the bid documents and bid this out and oversee the installation of all this equipment, there will not be any of this research fee added. In other words, this $48,000 that we would reimburse them, we'd only come to do is, if we do the study and then decide, no, we don't want to do any of these improvements right now. So if we do the improvements, I'm sure they're folding that into their overall cost of services because you don't get anything for free. So we did something similar to this with our water meter project, and it worked out really well. So be happy to answer any questions y'all may have, and of course, Joe and his team's here to answer as well.
So Council, any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
Could we get you guys to come up to the podium, please?
I might also say that they've recently completed this project similar to this for Hood County, so we've got a little bit of a track record, or Joe has.
Mayor Councilman, thank you. My name's Joe Davis, 1601 Harbor Lakes Drive, wonderful street, Granbury, Texas. And I'll be happy, Councilman Mobley, to answer any questions you might have.
First, tell me one more time that you're George's brother.
Well, I really claim Jesse Davis rather than George mainly, but occasionally Jesse makes me say George is my brother, too.
You're safer to do that.
Okay.
So on the recommendations, I just wanted to kind of go over some things, because when I was looking at these over the weekend, we've got an estimate of $1.4 million. We have a total savings of $211,000. Now, my understanding was, my, basically, my point was, why would we spend 1.4 just to save $200,000? So can you kind of go over the math with me on that?
Yes, sir. And as a matter of fact, I looked in what I brought Chris, and I had left out something that actually is savings of $200,000 a year.
Yeah, per year.
So 6.8 years, it'll save the $200,000, and then the seven through the rest of the time, you'll still save the $200,000.
Every year.
And I like the math, then. Like I said, I was just trying to figure out if that's the total cost. And it would be much easier to read if it would be an annual, you know, annual savings. I think we could save everybody some time. I know the county guys aren't going to pick this up, but we might look at it closer here.
Yes, sir. Well, and the other thing, too, is George was the one that checked it out for me before I...
Of course he was. And also, the lighting, we've been over some lighting modifications or potential modifications on the Square and Memorial Park. Would this include that? Because my understanding is that would void the warranties for those fixtures.
Yes, sir. And I brought my lighting guy here, which is, he doesn't know George, but, and he'll explain to you in a minute. One thing is, is remember, this was a preliminary audit. We gathered all the electrical usage and then looked at every light in the city that the city pays electricity to. I didn't, but Stephen did. And, you know, when we get into the detail audit, we go, you know, be going to your lighting guy and looking at areas like that where we can't. So, but Stephen, if you want to address that, his name is Stephen Nelson.
Thank you. The primary exclusions with lighting included the areas where there's already LED lights. There is in a number of areas, and that's what was excluded. If there are other issues, like a warranty would be voided if we opened up the light fixture, we would exclude those also. That would come in the detailed study phase that we would do that.
Okay. Thanks so much.
And we do propose changing out our main Cobra overhead lights into LED, and I believe we've set that as a standard moving forward for all new construction as well.
Yes, that's correct.
So how long will it be before we will be able to see this, or the findings, you might say?
Well, in other words, I expect to bring back the findings. In other words, normally, it would be somewhere around July the 1st when we bring back all the findings, but I will be visiting with Chris and his staff all along during this study and bringing stuff, and I'll be happy to come to the council with those if Chris wants me to, to give you our, here we are, here's what we found so far, et cetera.
Council, any more questions concerned for these gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
I might say that it's probably good that we took this off consent so that everybody can see what we're trying to do, you know? We're really trying to be good stewards of our resources. We're going to have to spend this money eventually, so might as well get it comprehensively and look at it all together in an engineered method. So $211,000 savings, first blush, sounds pretty good.
It does. Okay. Well, if there's no more comments or questions on that item, I'll introduce a, introduce a motion to approve the letter of intent to proceed with the Honeywell Incorporated toward the finalizing a contract for the lighting upgrades.
Submove.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on that item? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda, the first item being a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance number 1830 for the approving of a request of Historic Granbury Merchants Association for an SUP. And we'll call upon Scott Sobchek to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request from HGMA regarding their annual carnival that they hold each year. The two prior years, they've held that at the reunion grounds, just over by Moore Street. This is a new location. You can see the property that's delineated in teal on the map, zoned heavy commercial. There's a little bit of overlap of the site into the ETJ or the county area. Here's an aerial photo of this. Our zoning ordinance requires either light commercial or heavy commercial or industrial for a temporary outdoor event such as this with an SUP for an occasional event. The property is zoned heavy commercial. The HGMA is requesting an SUP. As part of the application for the SUP, they're required to submit a site plan. Their site plan, they attach to their application, is noted to the left-hand side of the screen. The city staff has submitted the required notifications within 200 foot of the subject property. We have supplemental standards as a part of the zoning ordinance requirements that's tied to this, the first being site plan, the second is that the lighting, including parking lot lighting, being directed away from properties zoned or developed as residential. The temporary use shall not exceed 14 consecutive days. 34 and 35 are of note, may not be located within 300 feet of any property zone for residential use or for any property occupied by a church, public school, daycare, or nursing home. And if I can direct your attention to the map on the right-hand side, the 300-foot halo is that red halo around the green subject property. And if you'll notice, within the halo, it does not touch any subdivided residential property. There is a school located within that, that's the Montessori School. They did receive a letter of support from the Montessori School. So regarding that 300-foot notification highlight and supplemental standard 34 that kicks in a three-quarter vote requirement, it does not actuate that provision of supplemental standards. Item number 35, or supplemental standard 35, is if there's any motor vehicles or PA systems that are a part of this submittal, and residential or schools or nursing homes are within 500 feet, then again, it kicks in the three-quarter vote. We have obtained correspondence from the applicant HGMA that there'll be no motorized vehicles or PA systems involved with this particular application or temporary use. So on April 5th, we mailed out four notices to adjoining property owners within the 200 feet. Again, this meets statutory requirements. We published notice in the Hood County News. As of tonight, we have not received any notification from the adjoining property owners within those halos, as prior mention, in opposition. So again, no three-quarter vote is required. On these types of temporary uses, staff is neutral on this. So we couched our staff report by laying out the facts to P&amp;Z and stipulating that if, in fact, P&amp;Z is supportive of the request, then we offer up, based on historical activities for these types of uses, the following conditions, which they approved along with the SUP in full by a vote of five to one, five a's and one nay. Very quickly, those conditions that they rolled into their approval by 5-1 is the applicant will need to file and have an approved event festival permit. Procedurally, if in the event, the SUP's approved tonight by City Council, then by our ordinance, our code ordinances, the applicant has to come forward with an event festival permit and process it through administrative staff, and then they get into the more of the weeds, like the health permits and whatnot. Also, the insurance coverage is covered in that as well. Secondly, entrance and exit along Highway 377 must be coordinated with local authorities. This may be done at the time the event festival permit is submitted and reviewed by the city. We got a very quick glance that was submitted to our fire inspector about the major ingress egress points to and from the site, which is noted in bold. And again, as part of your staff agenda report, you have a letter of correspondence from the fire inspector, Kevin Jones, regarding his review of that proposal. Condition number three, fire lanes will remain unobstructed at all times. No carnival activities, equipment rides, or similar will be allowed to encroach in the fire lanes. Before the temporary carnival will be valid for the following days, after which it will automatically expire and become null and void, those dates being May 21st through May 30th. And then lastly, the applicant shall provide a certificate of liability insurance in the amount of $1 million. That's also tied to the event festival permit under the code ordinances. That's it, Mayor, Council. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should the council have any, but again, the P&amp;Z is forwarding the report of a vote of five to one in support of this with the following conditions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open up the public hearing to the public. We do have some folks that have signed up in advance to speak on this one. I'll go ahead and call those out. Douglas Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for letting us come and speak this evening. I am a resident of the Gemstone Estates addition, which borders on the property that is being used by the carnival. And understandably, we have several issues with the traffic flow. I know your diagram shows a traffic flow through the car dealership, if I saw that right. And our street, Sardius Boulevard, which is right next to that on the west side, is going to, I suspect, going to get a lot of the extra traffic of people that are not knowing their way around. By the same token, coming and going, it's not a lot of room. That's the first issue I have. The second issue, your diagram there on the left shows parking, and it shows carnival. What it does not show is the carnival people's residential, what they're using, where they're going to be setting up their temporary residences during this time. Speaking out of experience, I used to manage a store in Boski River Center in Stephenville. Several times, we had the carnival. And I'm not against the carnival, and it is great. Carnival is fun. It brings money into the community, I understand that. We had the issues with the carnival setting up taking up a lot of room, but the bigger issue was their temporary residence. They live in RVs and things, and they take up a lot of room. They have a lot of vehicles that they drive, that they will be there. And I just don't see, when we walk and we drive through that area, we just don't see room for the carnival, for the carnival workers residencing, and the room for all the parking of the supposedly 1,000 that are going to be there per day. And my final issue was one brought up about the motor vehicles. They're saying no use of motor vehicles, but if you've been to the carnival, their generators use actual engines, like, just like a big diesel truck. And that's going to be the same kind of noise, the same kind of distraction that a motor vehicle would use. And that's all I have to say, and again, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Our next speaker is Richard Winters.
My name is Richard Winters, and I live in Gemstone Estates at 211 Sardius Boulevard. I'm not in the affected containment area, if you want to call it that, so I didn't get a notice. This is the first chance I've had to speak. Like Doug spoke on, there's a lot of concerns with traffic. Living there since 2004, there's been a few events at some other dealerships next door, specifically the monster truck events. Our street was lined up with cars because nobody had place to park. And I see that we have a limited amount of parking in here, so people are going to be, just like you would go on the highway, they're going to take the little path of the least resistance. They're going to end up in our neighborhood. We're asking for temporary parking signs. The city has the authority to do that for emergencies and special occasions. You do it on the square, you set them up. We're just asking for some temporary parking signs to keep those people out of the neighborhood and from crowding it up, because we all know that crime's going to happen when carnivals are in town. You know, I'm in the professional field, I know what carnivals bring. It's a headache. And the chief is here, and he can probably contest us some problems that we've had with carnivals. So those are some of the issues, and I also question where these people are going to start living, you know? I mean, how do you have temporary housing set up in a heavy commercial zone? I don't know if that's actually legit, because I haven't got a clear answer on that. So, and I've also asked where the generators are going to be. Are they going to be posted up near the residential property lines? These are huge generators, they're going to create noise that run these equipment 24/7, and all the refrigeration for the food vending. So those are some questions that I have, and I'm hoping that somebody here can answer those tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abby Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Abby Taylor. I'm also a resident of Gemstone. I live on Jason Lane, which, if you look at the picture on the right, you can see a few houses on the left-hand side. That's our street, right up against it. So I think that we're directly going to be impacted in a few areas. The first thing is the parking. So the other picture that was just up there showed an area kind of clouded with little marks showing parking. There's 64 spaces, give or take, in there. The thousands of people that they're predicting to come to this, if you take four people in a car and you do the math, that's parking for 256 people. Where are the rest going to be located? That is our largest concern. Having the first street behind this, I feel like we're going to be the first hit with that. And it was stated at the P&amp;Z meeting that the incumbency to Gemstone was a small price to pay for the revenue generated, so they're predicting a large crowd. They couldn't give us a number, but where are those people going to leave their vehicles? How do we keep our streets accessible for us? How do we keep it safe for our kids who play outside constantly in that neighborhood? The access from 377, it was mentioned, but I did not get a clear answer on what is going to happen. If you're northbound, there is no turning and there is no merge lane to pull into that little access between the dual lanes. It's pretty tight there on a regular basis. As someone who uses that turnaround regularly, because we do not have a direct access, I'm very concerned with traffic there. Concerned with crime increasing in the area, obviously. Have not been able to get a straight answer on whether or not there is an alcohol license for the carnival, but being right at the edge of the 500-foot buffer zone, if you will, it's concerning. And the employees of the carnival, where will they be staying? As someone who RVs regularly, I know our gray and our black water holding tanks aren't very large. I'm wondering where there's no sewer access or dumping site. That's just rough top of my head, what's going to happen with those types of things. And the generators, because when we go off-grid camping, we run our generator, and it drives me crazy when I'm there. We're dealing with much larger generators in this situation, as well as the ones operating the rides. I'm very frustrated, because I want to know why this is happening here instead of at the reunion grounds, which are equipped to handle fairs and so on. And I really feel like this hasn't been researched properly, and the public has not been addressed. the reunion grounds, which are equipped to handle fares and so on. And I really feel like this hasn't been researched properly, and the public has not been addressed. So I really would hope that we can get some thought on that from you folks. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ellen Rowell.
I live at 213 Sardius Boulevard. I'm also part of Gemstone Estates. And I also had some concerns about the ingress and egress on this. There's really no turn lane there, and there's been accidents there, because people are trying to turn into the Toyota dealership or into the neighborhood. And I just see that being a bigger mess than it already is. One of the questions I had was, there is only, and they said it at the P and Z meeting, there's only 64 parking spaces. And then they said there's overflow parking. And from what I can see, that field is not very big. And if there's thousands at this carnival, I'm not sure how many the overflow parking can handle, which is kind of the question I had, is how many total parking spaces are we talking about? And I also would ask that the city council look at putting up temporary parking for the neighborhood to protect us and our children from having anything happen with all the extra traffic and parking, and to be able to ensure that people that live there have ability to get in and out of their driveways. Because I've seen sometimes where they cut it, where they're parking over the driveways. So that's my big concern. I also have the same concern about the alcohol, if they're going to be serving alcohol at this, and the generators and the noise. So, okay.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Tisha Green.
Hi, my name's Tisha Green. I live at 211 Jason Lane. My fence actually goes right with the dealership. We were not given a letter to talk at the P and Z meeting, because our fence line is just right there. The issues that we have, I think as a whole neighborhood, we've all been talking about it online, is like everybody's saying, you know, there's not a fence around the carnival. So people can come from Old Granberry Road, park in our neighborhood, walk into the carnival, so therefore, they're blocking all of this area. And like they said, where are they going to sleep? Where are they staying? Are they camping out there? Is that part of the area that they're going to be in? Are they going to be in our neighborhood? Where my house is, we have one other house right there on the cul-de-sac. There's a huge open field right there, right behind the dealership. I mean, is that where they're going to be staying? Another question is, why isn't it at the reunion grounds? Because that is what the reunion grounds are for. You know, we have carnivals there quite a bit. Why would we have to put it here when this can affect our neighborhood's crime rate and the other neighborhoods exponentially? Every time we have a carnival, our crime rate in Hood County goes up. Yes, there is the benefit of getting a lot of, you know, getting money and revenue and stuff like that into our town, but I'm not, I don't, that doesn't bother me at my children's expense, at my house's expense, at my car's expense, my neighbor's expense. P and Z meeting said something about, you know, Gemstone Estates is kind of, they're going to fall to the wayside or something like that, and because of the revenue that's going to come in. That should not be an answer. Can we not do something to block off our neighborhood from all the areas that other people can get in? Security. Can we not hire security that's around the clock, 24 hours or something like that, to make sure that our cars and our homes and our kids are safe? And also towing. If somebody parks in front of my house and we tow their vehicle, who's paying for that? Am I going to pay for that? The city? The carnival? I mean, these are just some of the issues that I think our whole neighborhood has. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak on this item? I think we do have a representative from HGMA out here today, too, also. What I'd like to do is keep that public, the public speaking open at this time, and call upon the staff to possibly, and I'll let Chris lead it off, that maybe the staff could address or talk about the parking, the generation noise, the housing, the egress, the egress, ingress, and maybe the safety in the crime.
Happy to call on Ms. Hyde or whoever is HGMA rep to try to have some dialogue here, try to address some of these questions. I know that the staff probably doesn't have the question answers either, do you? Okay. So let's start with the egress in and out of that one location, and have you all looked at that. Well, maybe the first question is, everybody's dying to know, is why are we moving it from the reunion grounds to the Toyota dealership?
Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to be here. My name's Ken Hackett. I'm the chairman of the event, have been for the past, how many years? Been doing it four years here regularly. So I think I can address most of the issues. First of all, I think what needs to be said to the residents of Gemstone Estates, I'm not aware of any conversation about Gemstone Estates during the P and Z. So if something was added to the, added to the conversation after we, with the vote, I'm not aware of it. To their point of no parking signs, we have no problem with making sure that there's no parking from any attendance in their neighborhood. So I would certainly request that the city agree to that request, and let's put no parking signs in the entrances of the Gemstone Estates. Now, your first question was what?
Egress.
Okay. It's a 40-foot entrance. It's a dual-lane entrance. And I reviewed this with the general manager of the Toyota dealership, and Mr. Durant. And they agreed and even offered it. We didn't, we were looking at maybe egressing through Old Granberry Road, but they thought it would work fine. We do intend to take vehicles and block the parking, or the car parking to the west, so that they can't cut over to Sardius Street. So that's going to be blocked off during the carnival hours. So we don't want people driving out through the dealership over to Sardius Lane. So they'll have the ingress and degress from 377.
You know, blocking the streets and patrolling the streets, we probably need to have another conversation about the costs associated with that. But moving from there, the first question, I think, on everybody's mind, is what happened to the reunion arena area as a preferred location that pretty well already has been approved in the past?
Well, several problems it created. First of all, there's no lighting out there. It's very dark. It's not near as, I guess, pedestrian-friendly. The egress and degress in that street is substandard. As you know, it's a barge ditch road, very narrow, and we had quite a bit of parking problems and egress problems into there. 377, of course, is more visible. The carnival operator was looking for a better location when we went to the reunion grounds. If you recall, we had a good location next to the hospital, but the hospital didn't like it. So we acquiesced to their issues and moved to the reunion grounds. The reunion grounds creates some real issues with the operator, because the ground is so unlevel, and there's no lighting for the parking area. So we just felt like a better site was needed. Hopefully someday, maybe the reunion grounds facilities can be upgraded a little bit and leveled, and some lighting be done, but right now, that is not in the budget of the livestock raisers association. So we had to go find a new location. To be frank, this is one of our major revenues, so it's important that we keep the carnival alive.
How about the sale of alcohol? Do you know anything about that?
Absolutely none. No alcohol allowed. He's truly a family-style operator. As to crime, I'm not aware of any surge of crime when this carnival's been in town. I remember the first year, we had one incident, but I'm not aware of any surge of crime. No one has contacted us about any of these issues, and no one has contacted us from the police department about controlling these people, other than the first year, when we were next to the hospital, and a gentleman went into the hospital restaurants.
And the residency of the workers, where are they going to stay?
There will, let me make sure I get this correct. The dynamics of his operation has changed significantly, meaning he doesn't travel all over the US, and most of his employees are DFW situated. Many of them commute to the carnival every day from the DFW. There will be a handful, I think last year there was four or five RVs, and they will be parked on the back of the overflow parking, somewhere on the back edge of whatever we determine. We hope to have 200 to 300 spaces of parking laid out there, both on the hard surface and then on the overflow, and then moving to the, I guess it would be to the north. We will mow that area and outline that area and make sure, and we will have parking attendance there.
And that overflow is just to the right of that rear?
Yes. It's behind the actual monastery school.
Okay.
Mr. Hackett, I think you've covered everyone but the generator noise.
Well, I've been out to the carnival every year. They are called quiet, what's that whisper? Whisper generators? You can talk normally in the middle of that carnival. So I don't think noise is a great problem. They do make a noise, but they are considered whisper generators. They're as quiet as they are. They're highly muffled, and I don't sense that there'll be much noise, other than the scream of kids coming over into Gemstone Estates. I would suggest to you that our biggest problem would not be the parking in Gemstone, although I think we should take extra care to make sure that doesn't happen. But kids walking over from Gemstone Estates to get in the carnival, I think that'll be a much larger issue. And we might want to post some people out and around the car dealership and the grounds to make sure that they, you know, come through the dealership, which they're apt to do in a polite way.
What'd you say, how much parking did you say you were allowing for, 200 to 300?
We're hoping to park 200 to 300 cars at times.
And that's all in a grass area, is that correct?
The grass and the whatever's left over in the hard surface parking.
Hard surface, because there's always the opportunity, there's always, it may rain or whatever.
May rain. Usually when it rains, they go home.
Well, I mean, after the rain, they come to the carnival, it's still wet.
Right. We will be prepared for that. We'll have cars there to take care of anybody that gets stuck. It is grassed, and it is sloped, and so it shouldn't pond or puddle or mud up. Obviously, we would have addressed any of these issues that had been brought to us prior to tonight.
Stay there. There are probably some more questions. Councilman Couch, I think he has a question there for you.
Sure. Ken, what was the attendance last year?
I don't know if we have a number of attendance. Ticket sales are the only thing we keep. But I would say it was going to be over the 10-day period, which we're only running four days this time, 3,000 to 4,000, maybe?
3,000 to 4,000 over a?
10 days.
10 days.
Well, I do have some concern about the number, if you're saying you could park 200 to 300 cars?
Well, that's our goal, is to make sure we have plenty of ample parking.
Are you all going to charge to park like you did last year?
Yes, but a less. We're planning on doing $5 a carload, and that's to help to raise funds for the school.
Do you have a number of parking cars, based on that revenue you charged last year, what it equated to?
Well, we charged $10 last year.
I know, but I'm talking, how much revenue from that divided by 10 would tell us how many cars came in there over a 10-day period.
What was our total? Do you remember our gross parking revenue?
I'm trying to determine how many cars are going to be there.
I don't, I mean, I don't have, if I'd known to bring it, we would have brought it. We should have something in our files as to how much parking revenue we took in. It was a few thousand. I don't know if it was, wasn't it 5,000? 5,700 for the whole 10 days?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman from Ryder?
I want to preface this conversation with the fact that I'm on the chamber board directors of the BGI. I sit up here with the intent of bringing appropriate business into Granberry, so I am not against appropriate business in Granberry, but not at the expense of safety of my neighbors. And these folks are my neighbors, because I also live on Sardius Boulevard, and I will see this from my back window. So I do, if you all can be a little bit patient with me, I do have a handful of questions. Some of them have already been addressed. I do have a question. You said that there was only one incident at the hospital where somebody walked into the bathroom, that's the only reason the hospital was not okay with this returning this year?
No, 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 that was three years ago.
Whenever that was.
Yeah. That caused an issue, if I recall, with, they were concerned about someone using the restroom. The problem was, he showed up early in the porta-johns, and the facilities hadn't arrived on site yet.
Okay. And security. Actually, two questions, twofold. You said about overflow parking, you were concerned about not having enough lighting at the reunion grounds, but as, to my knowledge, that dirt parking area, grass parking area, also does not have lighting. There's lighting in the dealership proper, but not in the overflow parking lot. That, to me, is going to also deter people from parking over there, not to mention the $5 price tag you just put on it. So if you were me, if I were driving in there, I would drive right past that dealership and into our ingress and try to find a free parking spot. So I would also request that we have security or no parking, something of that nature, where we can identify residents of that area. I don't know if we, you know, if HGMA or somebody can pay to have a security guard out there to check IDs before they come in, whatever that entails. We've also got a whole slew of new housing that's still open, because it's being built right now. And I would imagine that that developer, the developer will not be very happy if there's damage done to his development back there. And kids are going to be climbing over that hill to get to, excuse me, to the dealership, to the carnival. I have another question. On the liability, I see that there's a million-dollar policy that's in play here. Is that going to cover Mr. Durant's cars if damage is done, because they're driving right through the dealership? And it's tight. We drove it yesterday, and it is tight in there. I don't know if he plans on moving his vehicles, but it's a tight squeeze. If you've got thousands of vehicles driving through the dealership, there's going to be damage. So is that going to cover that? Is it going to cover our neighborhood? And is it also going to cover the developer if they have some theft in that area? Because I assure you what will happen. Do you know?
Well, being in the real estate business, most developers have liability insurance and deal with theft every day, regardless of a carnival.
Well, I understand that, but in no fault of their own, this is going to be an outlying...
Yes.
I'm asking you, if your carnival folks are able to cover...
We were required and fulfill the insurance requirement to the city, to Mr. Durant's property, and to the HGMA. That was what we were asked to do, and we fulfilled that.
And I do apologize for our neighborhood not coming to the venue sooner, but it was published and advertised before it even came to P and Z. So this is kind of the first we're hearing about it as well.
No, my point was that if it, for what, 30 days, everybody's known HGMA was going to put on a carnival, we would have had to try to sit down and address these questions other than tonight.
You mean from the residents?
Sure.
Well, unfortunately, we have, I know that we had no attendance at P and Z, but all of our neighborhood are working folks. They work odd hours, they're in the healthcare business, they're police officers, they're EMS, they're folks that work odd shifts and are not eight-to-fivers and cannot come to a venue like this at 6 o'clock at night. So, you know, and most of us don't, most of us don't pay attention to the P and Z meetings. It's not something we're not, we're not notified about those kinds of things. So this was an opportunity for us to do this. So I guess my question is, the timing on this is not very good. To advertise something when it hasn't even been approved yet, that's my concern, is now, you know, are we feeling a little pressure to get this done, because it's in a couple of weeks, when all of these issues that probably should have been addressed sooner needed to be addressed?
I don't know if I can answer that question. There's a lot... There's a lot of what-ifs there, so we're here, we're here every year, we're here every day. I work six and seven days a week, I'd be happy to meet people at breakfast at seven o'clock or midnight if need be, but I just wasn't aware of the issues.
And I do have one last question, and I'll turn it over to the rest of you. Exactly, you said that this brings in quite a bit of revenue, is, does this bring in revenue to the city? What part of this revenue that you're bringing in actually goes into the city coffers?
Well, it's a fundraiser for the, for, just as all carnivals are, all festival-type events, it's a fundraiser for HGMA. That's, and we promote the city and the square and our merchants through it and fund our operations through it. It's just one component, much like the other festivals that we host in and around the town, mostly in the square.
Back to the security issue, I'm sorry, I have one last question. Back to the security issue, Old Granbury Road is a concern, and Sardius is a concern. And you mentioned having folks out there to monitor that situation, are you truly willing to do that? Because I think it's what our neighborhood is asking for, is safety.
Well, certainly, I, we'll be, we were planning on monitoring any egress or degress from the north through Old Granbury Road onto the property across that open field. We were not prepared to provide security officers, but we would be happy to assist in putting up the park, no parking signs and so forth. Again, it's a fundraiser, we try to, you know, net as much dollars as we can to operate our association over the year, but this is news. We do keep a security officer at the event, by the way, that's always there. When it's open, we have a security officer.
That's one security officer for how many...
And plus, there's volunteers, we have multiple volunteers out there all the time, so they're, they act in many ways the same way. If we see a problem, we'll tell the security officer, or we'll, but we could possibly get some more people to monitor that area. I think the best thing would be, is like you do at the city, is put out the no parking signs like you do at all the festivals, and that's been very effective, and I think they'll get the message right quick.
I hope so. Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
One last thing.
What else?
As we address this issue, that's also graduation weekend, so I know that we have a lot of families coming in from out of town, so in this process of figuring out how we're gonna monitor how only residents of Gemstone get into that neighborhood, we're also gonna have to figure out that process as well, because we're gonna have some folks that are gonna be coming in from out of town, and we don't have a lot of parking there to begin with. So we're gonna be competing with families for carnival parking, so just keep that in mind, please.
We do not intend to have any off-site parking, I do want you to understand that.
I think Chris wants to address a couple of the items we had there.
I'd like to call on our police chief to come up and, I've got a few questions, maybe you can help me sort of find out some truth or issues to Mitch Galvin, Chief of Police. Welcome to the dais.
Yes, sir.
Hey, we were talking about concern for crime, heightened crime in the neighborhood. With the previous carnivals, can you readily recall any issues that you've had related to increase of crime?
We've had some issues. How long has this particular group been?
From day one?
No, 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 how many years has this group been?
This'll be the fourth year.
This'll be the fourth year, okay. With this particular group, since the time at the hospital, we've had a few, nothing major. Prior to that, we'd had, I guess it's probably ten years ago, we had a sexual assault that was committed by one of the carnival individuals.
Different company?
Different company, though, that's why I wanted to find out when this company took over. Nothing major, it's just been minor disturbance-type situations.
On the issue with patrolling Sardius and those other streets in Gemstone, what can you foresee the need would be from the Granbury Police Department in relation to ensuring public safety during those four days?
Well, it would take more than who we have on the street. If we're gonna have designated patrols in that particular area, it won't be able to be done by the people that are actually on duty.
But we'd need to bring in some...
We'd have to bring in, we'd have to bring in people for overtime to handle that. And I gotta say that the only way parking in that neighborhood can be controlled is if the council votes to establish temporary parking, no parking zones there. Nobody can enforce, anybody can go in there and park anytime they want, I don't care who they are, or where they are, they're public streets, anybody can park there, and there's not anything anybody can do about it. So unless the council does something by creating a temporary no parking zone type situation, there's nothing that can be done about parking in that neighborhood.
Right. And then the problem is, is all the guests are coming to town, they wouldn't be able to park on the street either, so...
Yeah, there's, you're talking about a whole nother animal if you're wanting somebody to sit at the entrances on each end to determine who's on a guest list and who's not on a guest list and who can enter. You're talking about shutting down a complete neighborhood where nobody can come in unless you're on the list, and that, that's a whole nother animal, and that's way beyond our scope.
Probably not legal either.
I would not think so.
Are there any safety concerns or freedoms that we need to mention that you can recognize? I mean, do you have any concerns of egress?
The only problem with this whole site, and I said this at the beginning, is gonna be the traffic coming in and out. Three seventy-seven at that location is going to be, it's gonna be pretty tough. More so for the people coming out, because they're gonna have to wait forever to get out of that place, and when, anytime you have, something is slowed down to that effect of somebody getting out of somewhere, they're gonna find another place to get out. And where that pla, I don't care if there's a barricade there, I don't care what's there, they'll find another place to get out instead of having to wait in that line for forty minutes before they can get out the gate.
Well, the next issue is if the parking is stacked and you have an emergency, we're gonna have troubles.
Well, from the route, the way it was explained to me, they have a designated emergency lane of twenty foot going all the way around it, so we shouldn't have any problem getting in if we needed anything.
That's if the traffic's not stacked in that lane.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's just it. I'm not sure exactly how they're going to work, which way one goes, which way the other goes, but once you get off of three seventy-seven, I mean, they've got some arrows drawn there, but once you get past the separated lanes, you're down to one, so, you know.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Hackett.
Councilman Allen.
Mr. Hackett, I love carnivals. As a kid, now I'm too old and I can't ride and have some... I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. But you said, in this deal, they said that you would put up this two thousand, a two-million-dollar bond or insurance policy. One million, okay?
Yes, sir, it's one million.
Have you done that yet?
Yes.
Okay, okay, 'cause it had...
And the SUP permit, the festival permit, has been submitted as well.
Okay. This question is to Chris. Like on the Fourth of July, how many officers do we have working the square itself?
Thirty-five, all over town?
No. My question is, is anybody on the square?
What time, sir?
Fourth of July.
You're talking about there is a parade every one of them?
No, this, what I'm getting at, you said we need security out there. I'm trying to figure out how many we need for this carnival. And who pays for that, chief?
Are you asking me how much security would be needed at the carnival?
Yeah.
A lot more than one, and we've never been asked for security, but our officers have never worked security. I don't know what security personnel are involved in, it's not my house.
Okay. All right, who pays the police department to do the Fourth of July?
The city.
Do we get reimbursed?
No.
Then we should staff this out there with police, too.
Well, that's your call.
All right, we're not getting paid for the Fourth. It's a benefit that we don't get any money off the Fourth of July, correct?
Well, I would, I would argue with that, but...
How do we get money?
Your hotels are full and your sales tax revenue and...
You don't think anybody's gonna come spend the night? Go to carnival.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm not sure yet, but I'll go ahead and give you the floor.
No, I was just gonna say, it's a different animal because the Fourth of July is in the middle of town, and it's a few day, it's a couple to three-day process most of the time. This is at the end of town, people are not gonna be driving through Granbury, they can, they're to go eat or whatnot, they're gonna stop at the outside of town, go to the carnival and leave. There's no revenue coming in to support our police officers to do security out there that night.
All right, what do we spend for police on the Fourth, roughly?
Do not have that information readily available.
Sir?
I don't have that information readily available.
Sorry. I know it's twenty thousand for fireworks.
Well, it's ten is what the city pays.
We pay ten and DMO pays ten.
No, it just goes straight to the DMO and they pay it for us.
And it doesn't come out of tax fund?
It comes out of your general fund.
Of the general fund, yeah. So the city pays for it, taxpayers. Okay, so that's ten grand.
Okay, Council, let's stay on the carnival coming to town.
I bet you the carnival would cost us, I mean, a carnival, Fourth of July, forty thousand dollars for police with overtime and stuff.
I have no idea. We have volunteers, all hands on deck for that parade, and I don't know how you can put a value on what that...
I would look at the payroll, that's how I'd do a value. You know by that. Should know, and you didn't have it, and that's flat.
Yeah.
But how about all the no parking signs? Does the city pay for that, too, for the chamber?
We have those out, and those are approved by ordinance where we place them.
So the city pays a lot of money for that chamber to have the Fourth of July on.
And for the event that just took place, the wine walk, we put them out as well.
So if we do it out there, it's no big deal, is what you're saying?
I don't know that. It's already, it's already been voted on, and those areas are dedicated to being no parking areas during festivals.
Well, I mean, I feel sorry for the people that live out there, but I don't think it'd be that many people coming in for graduation. I don't think every house has two cars parked in front of them. And the problem is, if you put a no parking in front of your house, then your cars become in where they're gonna park at.
Right.
That's the only problem.
We address that.
Could I add something?
Do what, sir?
We'd be certainly willing to create some professional signs to say no carnival parking as they enter those neighborhoods, and violators will be towed, you know?
I don't know how legal that is.
I don't know if that's legal, but, I don't know if it's legal, but...
Zero effect.
Okay, all right. It's not legal.
Ken, I will say something also, and I think Councilman Ryanor brought it up, touched base on it, and I was kinda concerned when I seen this, and I know we've talked about this before, but the timing on getting an SUP on this, especially if we're moving it to another location, I don't, I think we need to, and we've talked about this before, and I don't know where the disconnect is, because if the council decides that they wanna table some of this, or they wanna take another look at this, then you're running right up to the time that you have to have this carnival in place, 'cause you got it scheduled. Matter of fact, you've already got it scheduled for the thirtieth, you've got it advertised without an SUP. It's on the, it's on the Visit Granbury website that it's happening.
I didn't authorize it, I'm sorry, I'm not aware.
I'm just saying, well, and, you know, so, I don't know where the disconnect is there, but it needs to be, it needs to be, an SUP needs to come to the council so that they have the opportunity to do just what they're doing right now, and then if there needs to be some changes, there needs to be some things that are tweaked, or even if they don't get approved, then you have another opportunity to go, you have time to do other things. You, it's really close when you come to us twenty-some days prior to.
First of all, we apologize for that inconvenience and putting the council in this kind of position if there is that, let me finish, that concern. We didn't, we didn't look at it that way at all. What it was looked at is finding a site with heavy commercial zoning that people would allow it to happen, and when we looked at all the potential sites, we had one other site, but they got taken away from us. When I contacted Mr. Durant, he, we met about it, we talked about it, we met with his general manager, and they liked the idea, and they said, "Go for it." So that's all it was. It was nothing more than that, because we had, the operator had problems with the old site, egress and degress parking, unlevel ground, it was just a lot of issues, so we just didn't have, there aren't many sites in Granbury that meets the SUP requirement. I'm sorry, I just, it wasn't intentional to put the council...
And I'm gonna say once again, we've had this conversation, so this is twice, that we went through the conversation of the timing of the SUP for the carnival. It needs to be done, I would say, two months in advance at the minimum, because if we're gonna do, if we're gonna go through this, then we need to understand, everybody needs to understand what's gonna happen, how it's gonna happen, especially if you're moving the site, and so that everybody has an opportunity to get their ducks in a row and make sure that it's, that we can do what we need to do, safety-wise, personnel-wise, and all those things related to that. It doesn't give us a whole lot of time to do it with what we have right now. And that's, I'm just saying, I mean, because I know we've talked about it prior, I think it was last year, matter of fact, but...
We didn't move it last year.
We went to the reunion grounds.
No, we've been there, we were at the reunion grounds two years.
Okay, whenever it was, I know we've had the conversation, so. Council, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley, and by the way, they opened, the, the, Public Area is still open. Go ahead.
So, don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but you said you'd be willing to meet with anybody at any time, you work six or seven days a week. I think the easiest outreach would've been to the person to my left, she lives in that neighborhood, and she could've orchestrated any kind of meeting that you would facilitate to address these. Couple of comments were made by some of our guests, and one was that the, it was a small price to pay for the burden that would be put on Gemstone.
We never said that.
Hang on, I don't know that anybody said you said that. So whoever said that, I apologize, because that's one heck of an attitude. It doesn't matter the recipients of the funds for that attitude, and we certainly can't take that attitude up here. I wanna go back to the hospital. You said the hospital, the only reason the hospital didn't want it there is because one person went and used the restroom? That doesn't make any sense at all to me.
Well, I don't know exactly what was done that moment in time, but one of the carnival workers went into the emergency room restroom, and we got a call the very next morning by two officials of the hospital.
And they said that's why you will never have it there again?
No, 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 no.
I think, I think that's the question. It's not about that single incident, it's why...
Oh, no, no, they, we had a meeting.
Please, please, you need to finish. But why are they not being good neighbors and wrapping their arms around this event as well? 'Cause you're asking several hundred people to enjoy this, this four-day weekend in their own homes without even attending it, and yet the hospital is apparently not willing to be neighbors to this carnival for four days either.
That wasn't the issue. We were pulled into a meeting the next day, and Mr. Councilman Couch was there to address the hospital's concerns, and we thought we did, and to be, to be honest with you, we were, we've been following the rules of the city from day one. So on that particular issue, it just started something, and that it was clear that the hospital preferred it not to be there. Plus, once we had the event there and the carnival was such a success, we did not have adequate parking there, so we had to move it.
So what were their concerns? You said they wanted to address, they wanted you to address their concerns?
The first address was people using the hospital facilities.
The one person?
Yes, that there would be others. Then it was, well, your, your, the tall ride would interfere with the copter routes coming in and landing. Well, we called out the airport manager, and he says, "No, it has no impact to them." It was just like, we don't want it here, so, but we were already committed, and we couldn't move it at that last day, at that last moment, but, and we met with the city manager at the time, we met with the council members, and they approved it.
Did you charge for parking while you were there?
Yes.
Do you think anybody used the hospital parking and then walked around the fence to go to the carnival?
No, because we posted people, and we posted barriers from them doing it. What did happen is they parked down that street, right across the street where there was no housing, and my understanding that a lot of cars... was no housing, and, uh, my understanding that a lot of cars were either required to move by the police and so forth, so we moved it from that site.
I think you're making a point here. Um, and, and, and part of the challenge here is that there are no good numbers presented. I mean, we don't have parking numbers, we don't really have attendance numbers, we, there's no information we can even base a decision on. I mean, we've heard several thousand people there, and then we hear in ten days, I don't remember what the attendance was, but, uh, five or, five to seven thousand dollars worth of parking, uh, which would be seven hundred cars on the maximum side. So, we've got numbers that are all over the place, and yet nothing is.
No, we don't have our, our numbers with us, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay, I'm gonna finish. If you can't present anything to us, then we have nothing to base a decision on, and that's the challenge up here.
Uh, again, if we knew these were the issues, we would've brought them to you tonight.
And if you would've reached out to the neighboring neighborhood, you would've known these were the issues, that's my point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Reiner.
It may be too late for this, but.
Never too late.
If Mr. Durant was willing to put it on his lot out here on, uh, on three seventy-seven, there's an entire industrial park out there, um, that might be of use. Is it, is it not feasible to put it out there? Is that a conversation that you could have?
I don't think, I don't think the permit process would allow us to put it out there.
I guess that's a question for.
We have this one weekend date with the operator, so I don't, we.
Again, that could've been addressed a long time ago.
I'll turn it on, I'll, I'll let Scott ask that question.
Scott.
So because this S U P is tied to the zoning ordinance, we have notification and publication requirements, it has to go, new location, new site has to go back through P and Z. So, all the more reason to kinda look at these things and assess them upfront, maybe a couple of months or two or three months prior to, so we can address these issues. But to, to answer your question directly, we can't move the publication, the formal publication notice from one site to another without going through the process again.
State law.
State law.
It's not our law, it's state law.
Council, any more discussion, any more questions for the, uh, the, uh, public out there?
Mayor.
Councilman Corrigan.
So, I, I'm hoping that what I'm gonna present will bring some closure to this conversation. The, part of their issues is parking, part of their issues is safety. For me, I think you've addressed the noise issue. I was out there two years ago on a fire truck, I didn't think it was that noisy, I'm assuming it's the same equipment. So, for the parking and the safety issues, assuming from the city, and again, there's a lot of assumptions here, that we can put no parking signs out, if that's even viable, because as you said, there are already pre-existing places on the square that we can do that. I don't know if there are in this community or not. So assuming that can be done to alleviate those issues, is there any possibility that the H G M A or the carnival operator or Durant or whoever could possibly fence off this back area here? If you look at the parking picture, you've got a secondary means of egress where you've got a couple lines of cars up here in the top left, that's a possibl, that's where your parking area is gonna be, close to that?
Okay.
So is there any way to maybe call a temporary fencing company or some way to block off that back area where their community is concerned about people potentially going in and out of their neighborhood by walking?
If they come out of the neighborhood, they're gonna have to climb over a fence to get, to get our fence to climb over, is that what you're asking? Okay. They're just gonna walk around?
There's no fence.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm saying we've gotta stop somehow the parking in their neighborhood.
Well, no, 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 so, I guess what I'm saying, for the security aspect alone.
Right.
So you, you've got volunteers out there, you've got a security guard out there, is there any potential that you could get with a temporary fencing company to essentially block off your carnival area so that people cannot come in and out as they please? They're more, more so forced to go in and out of your designated egress and ingress?
Well, the designated egress, degress was primarily for the automobiles coming and going, I, you know, kids, teenagers especially, like to walk, uh, sometimes, I'm, I mean, if they walk around and come through, through Old Granberry Road, you know, our, our objective was to stop any cars from coming up through Old Granberry Road. If kids wanted to walk up into the, into the carnival, I don't, I don't think we'd wanna stop them. I mean, that's the whole point of the whole deal. Now, we don't want them to cause trouble, and.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at, it.
Yeah.
If you're purely looking at it from a security point of view for the neighborhood.
Right.
Is that a possibility?
Well, we would, if we found we had any trouble, we'd, we'd call our security company and, and order more people out there. I mean, uh, I'm out there on opening nights and weekends every time, so with Brenda, so with multiple of our board members, we're pretty responsible people. We see problems, and if we can't handle them, we'll, we'll address them, I assure you. If fencing can help, we would look at it, but we just haven't budgeted, and I'd just have to find out what that would run us. All right, be happy to try to fix a problem if we have a problem.
Councilman Corrigan, and on the, on the parking, on the no parking, that would have to be, that would have to be another council meeting there to pass an ordinance on that. Couldn't just do that tonight.
Right. Do we have time? You do?
Well.
Barely.
Not really, because it takes thirty days to enact an ordinance, uh, after you assess it, create an ordinance that has a fine with it, so it's gotta be posted to the paper in its thirty-day waiting period. So no.
Without special?
No.
Oh, with the posting, okay.
Yeah.
There you have it.
There you go, sorry.
Council, any more questions or, uh, comments to, uh, Mr. Hackett?
Mr. Mayor, really quickly, so I, just to clarify the parking situation, as it stands right now, we will not be able to designate the no parking area.
You are correct.
The timeframe we are in right now.
That is correct.
Would posting some off-duty police officers help? I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm, if there became a problem.
Well, they can't enforce, tell the people they can't park on a public street.
It's a public street, Mayor.
It's, it's not legal for them to enforce a no parking in public.
Well, you can tell when kids are piling out of a car and they're walking out of the neighborhood, who they are. I hear ya.
Mayor, I, I have a.
Councilman Couch, he.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think.
Um, Ken, um, I've got a concern that there's, there's too many unanswered variables right now, and my concern for H G M A is, um, if this isn't successful, what does that mean for, for future carnivals? So, um, I'm, I'm a bit reluctant to, to move forward on this, um, that we may be doing, you know, future damage to the potential of, of, of the carnival. And, uh, I don't know if this is, you know, administrative, but, um, the timeline in, in which we're being asked to move on this is, is just, um.
Too tight.
It's really uncomfortable to have to make a decision on, on this tonight, but I, I want you guys to be successful.
Well, let me ask you something. You do have another council meeting before the event, correct?
Yep.
What are the issues you would like us to address, and maybe you can table it tonight, and we can try to address them for you before your next council meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
And that's, that is a possibility. Councilman, Councilperson Reiner.
The biggest issue that probably ninety percent of my neighbors have just addressed is the parking issue, and we've just determined that by next council meeting, that is not feasible. So, again, with that tight timeframe.
Well, there is a solution. Your, your concern was people would see five dollars a carload as a reason for going around and parking in your neighborhood.
I'm concerned that you have two hundred parking spots and a thousand people coming in in one night, and those folks that are not gonna find a parking spot in your two hundred parking spots are gonna drive eight feet down the road and turn into our drive, into our neighborhood.
Now, we have more land to use than what I showed, I just highlighted it, so we can, we can create more parking spaces in the.
It's a big caveat that we were unaware of. What land are you?
Our goal is to have two to three hundred spaces, we know that's a good number. That, you know, if you think it, you need to mow and line off four hundred spaces, we'll do it.
I'm concerned that you didn't do that in the first place.
No, I knew that two to three hundred is a good number to park cars for our events, that's all. I just made sure we had the space for two to three hundred. And we're only doing it four days this time. We're not doing it ten, two weekends and so forth.
Four days?
Four days. It's a Friday through Monday event.
Okay.
Could, could you bring us back a site, a site plan that's more specific that we could say, "All right, there's three hundred and fifty spaces"?
I could.
Councilman Allen, I think you had something, didn't you?
Oh, I was just gonna ask Chris, let's say that, if they parked in front of your house or your driveway, that'd be the biggest deal.
Were you, Chris?
We lived out of town, we'd have a, a festival, and they'd always park and block our cars so we can get them in and out. Is that illegal on the street, or what do you do?
Blocking the driveway, uh, is obviously a violation, and, and the police would be able to tow that vehicle.
Okay.
But, uh, where they're parked illegally.
Yeah, but I think it's a lot, a lot of your concerns, uh, Mr. Reiner, that it should be blocked in.
Driveways?
Yeah.
No, it's not being able to get into our neighborhood and having strangers walk through when our children are out there playing during the day, and folks that we are not privy to.
But the carnival, carnival, is it in daytime?
Oh, it's evening, it's, and, and then Saturday and Sundays, and I guess Monday would be a, a afternoon and evening.
Yes, so we will have children playing in that cul-de-sac that backs right up to that area. There are constantly anywhere from five to ten kids riding their bikes and playing in that area, it's a safety issue. We've got a bunch of cars that don't pay attention, coming in from out of town, who've never been here before, and they're looking for a place to park so they can walk up the hill and go to the carnival. It's a big safety issue. And that is my number one concern. I don't feel like this was thought through.
Good, council, have you got any more comments for the H G M A there? Thank you, Ken. Is there any more comments from the public? No more comments, I'll close the public hearings. Oh, I'm sorry. You first.
Uh, my name's Richard Winters, I live at two eleven Sardius Boulevard in Gemstone. Uh, I wanna throw a couple of things out there. I don't think we got a clear answer on where all the carnival employees are gonna be staying. It sounded like a, just a, a guess at how many people he thought was gonna be there and live off-site. There's gonna have to be people there maintaining the equipment at night, getting everything ready for the next day, so I feel like four peoples on the minimum side, so where are these people gonna be staying? My second question is, all this unimproved surface out there, the cars, I know when I parked my car in my yard, I got yelled at because it was parked on unimproved surface, so how are we allowing them to just park out in the field and, in the city? You know, I, I feel like that if I can't do it, then why should they be able to do that? And then, as far as the security, um, I have knowledge that in the past carnivals, or in this case, maybe the Emergence Association, could pay for some off-duty officers, I might be stepping on some toes with the chief, but, you know, why couldn't they hire some officers from the evening hours to put them on bicycle patrol? We have a bike unit, why can't we reimburse the city or, or pay the officers off-duty to come in there and ride around in the evenings and make control of the neighborhoods and the, and the carnival? There'll be some deterrence on top of what security personnel are gonna have on scene. So I'm just throwing those out there as some additional options, but as far as the parking, I would have to say, let's, let's don't do this if we can't get the parking signs up. You know, Councilman Allen says he doesn't think there's gonna be that many cars, well, he doesn't live there, and I guarantee if it was in his neighborhood, he would be throwing a hissy fit. So, I've been there when we had these monster truck events at the Dodge dealership, and it brings traffic, so we know, we live there, we see this day to day, so without stipulations or anything like that, I'm asking the council to deny this, this S U P. Thank you.
We had one more speaker, a couple more speakers, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, again, Abby Taylor, I live on Jason Lane, which is the cul-de-sac that, uh, was mentioned. Uh, yeah, we've got kids out there every day, there are six to ten every day, all day, we're not, our kids aren't sitting inside and tap into the video games, they're outside, they're on bicycles, they're on scooters, they use every yard available, and they zip back and forth, they're great, it's fantastic, it's nothing but basketball and scooters and skateboards out there. And we are right there, right against it. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the two to three hundred spots that he sort of seemed to kinda maybe think might be okay, that was his number based on a ten-day or week-long thing, well, he's, gentleman's saying it's being shortened to four day, four days, that tells me their daily attendance is going to be significantly higher per day if we look at the same volume of people coming, so I really feel like, well, we'll just use some more field. Um, at the P and Z meeting, uh, one of our residents was actually there, Josh Morrison, and brought up several of these concerns, and he indicated that at that time, permission had not been given to use that field, um, that they're proposing for the overflow, so I do need to ask if that has been since approved?
Yeah.
Okay, and is that number based on the ten-day span, or is that based on the volume projected on a four-day span? I guess since you don't have your numbers, you have no idea.
Whatever, whatever place we, we, we.
Thank you. Hi, Tisha Green, two eleven, Justin, I'm on the cul-de-sac, it's gonna be with all the kids. Um, he was saying that he had, uh, put in there the projected parking, but he had extra parking that he could use. Was that in the area, um, that would have added our houses to the vote to come to talk at the P and Z meeting? Or is it on the other side? What other parking are you talking about? Adjacent to those areas, like where? Okay, so would that widen the two hundred feet area into, to include all of our houses that could've talked at the P and Z meeting?
Ma'am, go ahead, address the council here.
I'm sorry. Um, also, the, he was talking about the security, he has one person that does security, that's security for the carnival, that's not security for anybody else. That's the machinery and stuff like that. He was talking about maybe getting some more security, are there gonna be background checks? There's just too much not known about this that I feel that it shouldn't be voted on tonight, because it's clearly not prepared, and we don't have any of these answers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Ellen Rau, I live at two thirteen Sardius Boulevard, you might've seen me before. The only question I have, the, the temporary no parking zones, I did mention those myself, and then it occurred to me that there's people on our street that have no choice but to park on the street, because our driveways only hold two cars, and a lot of these times they got teenagers and all the, and they park in front of the houses. It's not just that, but then you also add on what Ms. Reiner said, of the people coming in for graduation, um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure I think that the temporary no parking's gonna work for us. The major thing I have is once again, and I, I think the, the police chief alluded to this, is the ingress and egress, most specifically, and you can't see it on this thing, but if you know the neighborhood, you know, the area, right where the ingress is, if you're going northeast on three seventy-seven, then there's only one way to get in there, and it's to turn left at the Toyota dealership. There's no turn lane, there's a yellow stripe that says, it shows you're not supposed to go onto the shoulder except for emergency parking only. Well, this isn't emergency parking, so now you've got all these people on three seventy-seven. Well, this isn't emergency parking, so now you've got all these people on 377 stacked up. It's just an accident waiting to happen when 377 speed limit out there is 55 and people are doing 60 and 70. It's just how life rolls, I've known from living out there. That's my big concern is, I think that's a safety concern with the ingress, especially going from that direction. The egress is a concern because it stacks up into the dealership and people are gonna be looking another way out. Now, with that one, if we can protect the neighborhood by closing that gate that goes onto Sardius Boulevard, that's one way to keep people from seeking another egress and using our neighborhood as a drive-through. But that was kind of what my questions were, that I didn't really hear addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. No more comments from the public? I will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more comments? If there are no more comments, I'll entertain a motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilperson Reiner.
I move that we vote to deny the S U P.
So we have a motion to deny the said S U P with the conditions also. Second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion to deny the S U P as said in front of us, and we have a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion? I'll take a record vote on this one. Councilman Corgan, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Allen?
Nay.
Councilman Couch?
The vote is to deny, correct?
Yes.
Let's say, yes.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
So we have three, four, and two against it is that motion does-
We're gonna have four.
So in order to have four, it fails. The motion fails.
They're going by the charter.
By the charter?
Yeah.
So counsel, this, it, it has failed with that motion, but I would ask the council if you want to, if there's a motion out there to table this and bring it back at a prior date.
Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
So I have a motion from Councilman Allen to table this for a prior date.
To bring it back on May the, I believe it's the 16th.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, May 15th, and I'd ask Mr. Hackett to bring a, a drawing of the parking area. And then also, if you give Mr. Rand, I think the lady had an excellent idea about getting that gate closed and bring it back to council. The good part is I won't be here to vote on it, far you're against it, but I, I think it does need more work. I agree with you, counsel.
Okay, so we're gonna table it to May 15th with the said request by Councilman Allen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Corgan? So I have a motion and a second. Counsel, any more discussion on this, the table motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
I'll, I'm gonna vote in favor, but I don't want to get everyone's hopes up either. So I just want you to be prepared for that, that it's gonna have to be a really good plan to solve a lot of problems, I think, to get approval.
Okay. So we have the motion, and we have a second on the table that Councilman Allen has brought forth. Any more discussion, counsel? Once again, a record vote. Councilman Corgan, how you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
So that motion is approved to table this for, for date, which is May the 15th, with the said. So we'll look forward to some updates on that from May the 15th. We'll now move on to the next agenda item. Which is also a public hearing considering approving a request of Dale Alexander, and I'm gonna call upon Scott Alex, Scott Sobchek from the staff to give us a staff report on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Mr. Manager. We have is a replat application which proposes to combine two recorded lots of record into one recorded lot of record. This property is located off of Davis Road, south of Granbury generally, just north of Ria Road. It's located within our ETJ. It is not on the City of Granbury Water System, it's on Amos Water System. You can see at the, this is the northeast corner, Bay Cordova Ranch Road and Davis Road, generally where the two lots of record are currently located. As required by state statute, we did send notification out to property owners within two hundred feet. We've received no commentary from the joint property owners in opposition. This is the aerial view, the, the two structures that you see have since been demoed for preparation of combining into one recorded lot. This is a flat application submitted by the registered professional land surveyor. You can see the replat proposes that we abandon and vacate that common lot line as well as the easements that are recorded. As part of our process, we get letters from franchise utilities prior to initiating this process, asking whether or not they have any infrastructure investments in those easements. If they do, they have a certain timeframe, within fourteen days, to get the commentary back to the city staff. We have not received any franchise agency correspondence regarding any concerns there. So they, they've met subdivision ordinance for the abandonment of those easements that are shaded in gray. This particular application has a litany of variances as some often do in the county. We have a variance request to 3946 to not upsize water on Bay Cordova Ranch Road. Bay Cordova Ranch Road has a six-inch water line. Davis Road itself has a ten-inch three-mile water line. Variance to 3945 to not provide sewer along Davis Road. What's being proposed is a septic system, which is commensurate with all the other residential lots within subdivision. A variance was requested to 42 and 410 to not improve Davis Road or Bay Cordova Ranch Road to an urban standard facility that is standing curb and gutter, and a variance to 48 to not install streetlights. You have a memorandum from your city engineer recommending to both P and Z and city council that we support this. Again, we're actually decreasing the density. In fact, they have two recorded lots of record, they could build two structures there currently. We're actually decommissioning that and just allowing for less service units at this proposed site, so that's why you see the support letter from your city engineer. Your planning and zoning report is that they unanimously recommend approval of the itemized variances and the replat application as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead.
Scott, there's a photo in my packet that shows, there we go.
Yeah.
What exactly are those? Are those trailer houses?
Those are gone.
Pardon?
Those are gone.
They're drawn?
They're gone.
Oh, okay.
They've since been scraped, the site's been razed.
Okay, so they, so, I see.
It's an old, it's an old aerial photo from our pic commentary that we get from Hur County. Yeah, there's, they've scraped the site, and they're gonna build it as a one buildable residential site.
Gotcha. Thanks for clarifying that. I was trying to figure out how we were lowering the density with two houses already there, possibly three, I'm not sure what that might mean.
Yeah, they're cleaning up the site up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. At this time, this is a public hearing, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item in the public? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any question or concern to Scott on this particular item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the, the variances, approve it with the said variances.
Second.
So we got a motion by Councilperson Reiner, and a second by Councilman Corgan. Counsel, any more discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next item, number 10, is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 18-31. Once again, I'll call upon Scott Sobchek to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Mayor, counsel, and Mr. Manager, our current zoning ordinance allows for produce, florist, flower shops to be catalogued as produce sales inside. The, the land use matrix requires an S U P in light commercial and the central business district, so for example, a flower shop will need to get an S U P. So this amendment proposes two things. One, it allows for produce sales to be by right in light commercial in the central business district, which seems reasonable. Again, these are maybe neighborhood grocery stores that seem a good, kind of a neighborhood residential adjacency type use to allow for produce sales. The other nuance is florist. When you look at our definitions, florist is required to be in produce sales, and so by S U P, if I wanna open a flower shop, then I need to get an S U P for produce sales to open a flower shop, and then when you look at, for example, HEB or a major grocery store that has flowers, they're by right, permitted by right. So we're, we're refining that to allow for florist, which you can see highlighted on the very bottom under general retail sales, to be catalogued as general retail sales, as to button hook or bootstrap into produce sales. So I think we're cleaning up the ordinance, we're allowing for a little more user friendliness, opening the definitions up, and by right applications, doing away with S U Ps for florist, unanimously approved by your planning and zoning commission.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions, concerns on this item to Scott or the staff? If none, I will entertain a motion to approve the said zoning ordinance as presented by the staff.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider approving the selection of a, of a City of Granbury representative who can serve on the North Central Texas Council of Government. It's on the Development Block Grant Regional Review Committee. And I'm gonna turn this over to our city manager, Chris Coffin, to kind of explain that a little bit to the council, if you would, please, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. We did receive a letter from the council government looking for a nominee from our, mainly our elected body. They, they are needing elected people to serve on this. They already have a, I guess their quota of appointed staff, and so they're soliciting for elected officials on our council to serve in this capacity, and so we need to nominate someone that's willing to serve this committee. The Regional Review Committee actually scores the regional community block grants that are taken throughout our council government region, and so they also meet to develop the guidelines and the rules for what the scoring process would be for those submissions, and also what type projects would rank higher than others. Currently, the historical trend for this program has been for watered sewer projects. Other regions promote streets and other type activities, but this is money from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that's doled to the state. Large cities over eighty thousand population get, get what they call an entitlement amount of money, and so there's another part that's peeled off for rural competition, and we've recently submitted a grant similar like that for the first time in our history, and we didn't score quite well enough to get into the funding. So, you know, having a person on that board's not gonna make that happen because you would have to abstain from voting on something related to our community, but it gets you out there working with other mayors and county judges and elected officials and some city appointees that helps carry the load for administering this fund among the smaller non-entitlement cities. So at this time, I don't think there are any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you got any questions on this? I know there was a pretty lengthy in the packet describes, and, and Chris did a good job of summing it up, but there's a lot more that goes to it, and they think they meet, what, twice?
The, the time commitment would probably be about four meetings a year, time commitment, and those would be probably half-day meetings. When they score the grants, they have presentations made by representatives of the communities, and most of those are grant writing consultants, but they make a short presentation, and it can take a whole day in some situations to review and receive all those grant applications.
Are those meetings in Arlington?
Yes, they'll be at the council government office.
Six Flags there.
So half-day at the meeting, half-day at Six Flags, you're good to go?
I think we have enough.
So there you have it, counsel, and we're looking for a nominee to, to, to do this.
Can we ask who, who wants to do it before we start nominating people?
Well, I, I will say, I'm in, I'm on some, one of those.
Having been down that road, I think that's an excellent idea.
I am on one of those committees up there, and, and I don't mind doing it. I've, I've talked to some of the folks that are on it. There are several mayors, like Chris said, and when you have the ability to, to set up there with the other mayors and council people up there, then, you know, it kind of makes a difference somewhat, but, um, what they're doing up there, so.
You're saying to nominate you, mayor.
Yeah, I'm saying I would do it if, if you feel-
Ladies and gentlemen, I make the motion that we put Mayor Hewitt on that committee.
Nominating.
Nominating.
Speaking of the mic here, Mr., say that really loud.
The handsome mayor. Hey, we can joke now.
Okay, counsel? So is that a motion? Is that a nomination, Ms. Allen? Mr. Allen does have a nomination.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Mobley has a nomination, or seconded the nomination, and yes, I would accept that nomination. Any more discussion, counsel?
Wait, 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 he's thinking about it, where that Six Flags got it going.
Got another nomination, throwing out there.
Open six months out of the year.
Normally, they do ask for a substitute to be put on the list also, so, you know. Any more discussion on that? Any more nominations? So we have a nomination, myself. That said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I don't have a vote, do I? Not yet, okay. So that's, we will, I will serve on that, I will serve in that capacity then for that board.
We'll nominate you and let them do their selection, is how it works. Just 'cause we nominate you doesn't mean they're gonna accept our nomination. But they may have an overflow and have to narrow it down.
I'll do everything I can to impress them, okay?
There you go.
Yeah, we'll put a Six Flags pass on the budget for Greg next year.
Yeah. At least mayor will wear a jacket.
He'll wear a jacket.
Thank you. At this time, and I now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened in the open session, and all our members are present, and the city council will now go into our closed session pursuant to the provision of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551-1087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and Section 551-071, Consultation With The Attorney. We will now go into our executive session. The council has reconvened from executive session back into open session, there was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
I'd like to make, make a motion that we authorize the city manager to work with Hibbs and Todd to move forward with options A, B, and C on the new water lines around the loop.
So we have a motion to work, to have authorized the city manager to work with Hibbs and Todd to move forward with the new water lines with the loop? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Couch? Councilman Couch? So we have a motion and a second, any more discussion on that topic? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will be approved. Counsel, any more discussion? If no further discussion, the...